Everybody good? Board all right? We good? We good? All right. Good evening. Let's go ahead and kick this off. Welcome to the Waxahau Board of Commissioners meeting this May 13th, 2025. I'd like everybody to raise now for our opening ceremonies for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of thanks and praise.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. So it sounds like we have a couple amendments to the agenda tonight, or at least one amendment. We will be removing item E5, the approval of the Grove Manor Street sidewalks and streetlights dedication. Are there any other amendments or adjustments to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Quick question. Question?
Sure.
To town clerk, did we receive information about the Ethel Street property?
Yes, we received an email late this afternoon that the property owner wishes to request a deferment until the May 27th for the decision. However, the board can decide whether or not they want to defer or if they want to go ahead and act on it.
So do we want to wait for that item or make an adjustment to the agenda?
You need to wait for the item so that you can address the deferment request.
Very well. So the only adjustment to the agenda is the removal of item E5, the approval of Grove Manor Street sidewalks and streetlight dedications? Any other adjustments or amendments? Can I get a motion to adopt this agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor? This agenda is adopted and amended. Next up, general public comments. Looks like we have one person who has signed up. You have three minutes directed to the board as a whole and keep it civil. First up, we have Brian Helms, County Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, it's good to be here with you tonight. My name is Brian Helms. Although I currently serve on Union County Board of Commissioners, I'm here representing myself tonight. I wanted to let you guys know that on May 5th, the Union County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution against House Bill 765. Indian Trail, Mineral Springs, Weddington, Unionville, Wesley Chapel, and even Stallings have adopted similar resolutions. And I've come before you tonight to request and encourage your board to consider adopting a similar resolution. As of last week, HB 765 was revised, but it was also moved to the House Finance Committee. Make no mistake, this bill is not dead and it can be brought back. Some of the lowlights of this bill include changes to density requirements in our county. If you like five houses per acre, the original version of this bill is definitely the bill for you. Voting and conflicts of interest are also covered, prohibiting members of boards like what you sit on from voting if you have a fixed opinion, so to speak. Water and sewer plants are covered here. This bill creates scenarios where you have a revolving door of sewer plant building. That may seem like a county problem, but this is a ratepayer problem. It affects every ratepayer in the county. Package plants, that's been a big topic in our county lately, but don't worry, HB 765 takes care of that for you because it allows package plants just about anywhere. But most importantly, this bill removes the ability of citizens to petition local government on land use decisions. So what is this bill? Well, it's entitled Save the American Dream Act, but it should be called the Developers' Dream Act. This bill destroys local government authority over zoning, density, utilities, and subsidizes residential development on the backs of the taxpayers and the ratepayers. This bill is a developer's dream come true that sells out our county and our state for greed. Don't believe me? Look at the primary sponsors of this bill. Our very own Mark Brody is listed there. And the North Carolina General Assembly's website lists him as a contractor. Jeff Singer, he's a primary sponsor, general contractor and developer. Matthew Winslow, he's a home builder. So at least two-thirds of the sponsors have direct ties to real estate and development. Two-thirds. It's time that Raleigh understands that they represent the people and not special interest. Local government is the level of government that is closest to the people. The problem with HB 765 is that it's meant to usurp local control from the people in favor of lobbyist groups, campaign funding, and the almighty dollar. Raleigh doesn't know what's best for Union County or Waxahau. Let's keep local decisions local. Say no to HB 765. And again, I would encourage your board to consider some action. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Commissioner Helms. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. We've removed one item from the consent agenda, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as it was amended?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay. The consent agenda is now approved and passed. First item is Old Business, Blair Israel. It sounds like we have a deferment we're being requested. Any updates or comments you want to provide clarity on?
As I understand it, it's a decision of the board whether to defer or honor the request or not. I don't know if the clerk instructs anymore than you already have.
Yeah.
So if you like, I can give the presentation I was going to.
No, I was just wanting to clarify that that is the official stance of the property owner, that they do want to defer.
Yes.
Okay. So what I will ask for then is a decision from the board. Does the board wish to defer? If not, then we will resume action this evening. So could I get a motion to defer Old Business item I1 to May 27th?
Mayor?
Sir?
Just wondering if anybody actually came out specifically for this. Might be something to consider whether we defer or not.
To speak on this or to see more about it?
Yeah, or to hear or...
Yeah, I don't know if that's the case or not. Nobody spoke to this item, so I don't know if there's people that...
Well, we've already had the public hearing for this.
We did.
Yeah.
So I guess I will restate the motion. Can I get a motion to defer Old Business item I1 to May 27th? If we, again, if we do not defer, then we can take action on it this evening. All in favor of deferment?
Is there a motion? Who made the motion? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Someone has to motion for the deferment and then vote on that motion.
I'll move to defer this item until May 27th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's three ayes? Okay. So this item is now deferred until May 27th. And we will update the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Next up, we have a discussion about the budget summary and an update for fiscal '24 or '25, '26. And our town manager, Mr. Hicks, what do you got?
I'm at your desk. You should have an updated sheet. I've spent the last few days going through each individual budget to concur that the numbers are right. We have had a few things that weren't exactly right and then we changed. I've also made some cuts to the budget, nothing significant. This sheet gives you an example of a 30 cent tax rate. The midpoint tax rate was .3235 and also a summary for a 34 cent tax rate. As you recall, revenue neutral was determined to be .262 cents. And what we had proposed was the 30 cent tax rate. And if you look at the bottom on the left-hand column, and once I've gone through most of the budgets and the expenditures, I'm probably by 80% finished. I'll finish that up this week because I do have to present you with a balanced budget by June the 1st. But with a 30 cent tax rate, the anticipated revenues would be $25,540,859. The current expenditures as proposed would be $24,979,067, which actually leaves you a surplus of about $561,000 that is currently not budgeted for any specific item. Now, what this budget does include is a 3% COLA, which costs about $300,000. It includes merit raises of up to 3%. Which, again, the full 3% would cost about $300,000. It includes an adjustment for all law enforcement salaries. Basically, we would bump everybody up from about $10,000 for your basic patrols. I think the sergeants will go up about $11,000. Then we got some that would go up about $11,500. So that puts our salaries...
And that's on the 30 cent rate, I'm sorry, you're referring to?
Yes.
All those items?
Salaries in range with your competition in the area. That total cost is about $347,000. It also includes Rosie and Emily spent a lot of time last week looking at our salaries, looking at the salaries of the surrounding communities and the counties. And they'll bring forth a future recommendation for the non-law enforcement salaries. And to make those adjustments, it would cost about $108,000. All four of those items are included in all three budget scenarios here. It also includes the hiring of four additional police officers effective January the 1st. And it also includes the purchase of four new cars for those officers. What it does not include is any new personnel. It also does not include any capital outlay other than the transportation projects that you have to do next year, which was the $1.375 million, I believe. But each budget includes all those items that I've listed here. And as I mentioned, the 30 cent tax rate gives you about $561,000 you could allocate to additional capital projects, or you could decide to hire additional personnel that has been asked for by the department heads. If you look at the .32.35 cent tax rate, that leaves you about $1.6 million that could be used for additional capital projects or other items. And the 34 cent tax rate gives you about $2.27 million of additional expenditures. As I mentioned, I haven't allocated any of those additional funds to capital projects. And I think that's where staff needs some guidance from the board. I would also like guidance from the board. Are you comfortable with a 3% COLA, the 3% merit, and the additional adjustment of salaries to make our salaries competitive with your neighbors? I think, Tom, other than those questions, I think I can finish the budget. I would just like some good guidance on those salary adjustments. And if you have a specific tax rate that you like, is it the 30 or the .3235 or anything in between, I'd like some guidance from you. So when I prepare the final budget, I kind of got an idea where you want to go with it. I'll try and answer any questions you might have. Actually, 30 cents ended up better than I thought it would.
That's good news. Any questions or comments from the board?
Now, there were capital, I don't have the budget proposed thing in front of me, but there were some capital improvement projects that were left in the budget. And then there were some additional projects that we discussed with, not James, who was it? The engineering guy?
Orion.
Yes, thank you. That he discussed, that he said that we had committed to. Are those committed-to projects still part of this budget?
The only capital that is in either of the three tax rate scenarios are the three construction...
Was the three?
Projects that you have already signed on with DOT to move forward on them.
Okay, so the others are not in here at all?
Right. And you've got about $5 million worth of capital projects on that list that are currently unfunded, like the saw machine for the sidewalks, the sealing machine for the roads, dump trucks, you know, parking improvements, all those are currently not funded.
What about the learning center?
That would come out of this year's budget if you decide to move forward. I'm assuming that's appropriation from fund balance. So it wouldn't have any effect on next year's budget.
But there were also some projects I think that we had committed to with, I think it was NC DOT or some other agencies, you know, as part of things that we were going to be working on with roadways and things. And none of that is in here.
The three construction projects with DOT, which are the traffic signals that are to be installed in the upcoming budget year, those projects are fully funded in this budget. But those transportation projects are the only ones funded. And you are obligated to move forward on those three projects.
So are there transportation projects then that are not included in this?
Yes, they are in this budget.
Okay, but those are all, that includes all of the transportation projects?
It hits on $1,375,000, which covers three of the transportation...
Only three.
Projects that will go into construction next year.
Okay.
The only thing that is not funded is the design of the Western Parkway. And you allocated about $2.5 million last year into that fund. So that $700,000 design cost could be covered in those funds that you've already allocated. So if you do 30 cents, you've got about $561,000 you could allocate towards some of these other capital projects.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking about that list. I don't have the booklet in front of me to go through what that list was.
Yeah, I think basically, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Hicks, is that...
Probably bring up that CIP list on the screen.
The one that Orion spoke about, not just the three that were listed, because there was a number of items that was in the booklet or in his presentation that he spoke to that we had committed to, that he stated that if we backed out, it wouldn't look good for the town. And I just want to just recall what those were or what the amounts were for those projects and something so that I would have a better idea as to what we're not committing to with 30 or 32 or 34.
He was referring to those three transportation projects.
I think it was more than three.
And they are...
I believe the point was there are more that we want to do, but our commitment are to those, our dire commitment is to those three where...
I just want to have a full understanding of the other ones that he listed that stated that if we did not commit to, that it would look bad for the town. So there were some that Orion spoke to and he went through in the presentation. It was listed underneath the projects that he did. I don't have that list in front of me, but I just want to have an understanding of what that is to remember and see if we are not or if we are committing to those particular projects or how much they would be, you know, moving forward and things like that. That's what I'm asking.
It's the same three transportation projects that are currently funded in this budget.
So the long and short of it is...
Those are the only three projects that he mentioned that the town was already obligated
Because the three that say DOT, right? On the, on screen right now, we have three that say DOT contract. I think those are the ones you're talking about.
Yeah, because that's nine...
He had a list of items that he spoke to that said that we had, does anyone remember that but me? There was a list of them.
I do. I do. I think these are the three that he was referring to, that we are fully committed to, that if we drop out, we look bad. Because the other ones are not as dire because they're further out. That's the big problem.
What you have proposed funding in next year's budget is the Kensington Road Mill Bridge traffic signal, which will be right down here. My share of that project is $270,000. The second project is the Bonds Grove Church Road and Highway 16 signal. Our share of that project is $355,000. The third project that he referred to was the Pine Oak Waxhaw Marvin Signal, which our share of that project is $750,000, which gives you the $1,375,000 of transportation projects that are funded in the proposed budget.
So those, just to clarify too, again, those are the three projects that we have committed to invest with DOT that if we were to back out of them, any of those three and just those three, those are the ones that could make us look bad if we were to back out. So those are the ones we've remained committed to at this point.
The only other project Orion mentioned was the sidewalk scare fire, which actually grinds down the bed sections of the sidewalk. That was estimated at $50,000. And the crack sealing machine to actually fill in the cracks on the road, I believe, was about $75,000. Those are currently not funded in the proposed budget. And again, the only thing funded for capital projects are those three transportation projects.
So the Pine Oak Signal, though, that could be considered a transportation project, but it's just not a do or die with DOT?
I think they've already started designing on these projects. They've already started tanning right away if it was necessary. So all three of these projects are moving forward. I mean, I think Orion's point was, if you back out on now, it's going to cause you problems in the future because DOT's not going to want to work with you on projects when you pull out in the last minute.
So should we go line by line on this CIP and just, because he needs direction from us?
I do have a question. Have you considered delaying the COLA and the police raises till January? And then what would that do to the...
Sorry, what was the question? I couldn't hear you.
Delaying the COLA and the police raises until January. I know that's been done on other boards before, and I'm wondering what effect that would have and also if we, as I've been consistent, eliminating the comms position and possibly and not hiring a grant writer at this time? It's two additional positions.
Vote the COLA, I mean, the merit would be $600,000. The adjustment to the law enforcement salaries in your general fund salaries would be about $500,000. So all total, you're looking at about $1.1 million. So if you waited until after January the 1st, it'd be like $550,000 savings.
And that's a considerable savings. And then again...
But isn't...
And the comms position, I mean, we've already advertised, but they're in the process of doing the actual interviews now, so...
Didn't we budget for it as well?
Yes, it's in the current year's budget.
Yeah, it's in this budget, but that's a long-term growing of government that I would prefer not to have because then I can foresee an assistant coming down the line and, you know, you're just adding people. And I don't know if the budget is tight this year. And I don't know if the budget is tight this year, or we can assume it's gonna be tight in the future. And I would prefer taking care of the people that are here now and making do with what we have. And so I support the COLA, I support the merit. I just wanna be smart about moving forward.
And you've got time, I mean, Tom, I'll just leave, you know, if I don't get a specific response from you, I'll put the budget together, Tom, and after there's five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars left over, I'll put that, Tom, in a contingency account. You can decide where it goes as you start going through your budget in June.
So we're-
And that five sixty-one may be a little more, may be a little less. But, um, like I said, I've gone through about eighty percent of the, of the budget so far, so I've still got some work to do.
I just don't feel comfortable with, um, attacking the COLA or merit increases or the salaries and expenditures of the town. That, I mean, my head is, from the beginning, has been, why aren't we taking a closer look at the CIP projects?
Yeah.
I mean, we've got right after this, we're talking about a, a learning center. It's a million dollars. And you've got right here in, at the thirty percent mark, which is greater than revenue neutral, of negative nine hundred thousand dollars. But that's not entirely accurate, because we didn't take into consideration the learning center, which would add additional negative to this.
I thought the intent with the learning center was to take that money out of fund balance, to, Tom, out of your current fiscal year, not next year's budget. So if you award the construction, be it for that tonight, that money has to be allocated out of this year's budget. Cause that really doesn't, it shouldn't have any impact on next year's budget other than you using, you know, a-
Well, no, it would, because salaries and expenses are an operational expense, right? So it's not just a one-time thing, right? And so when we're thinking ahead, all right, that extra, those extra funds could be reallocated.
Yeah, there's gonna be future costs to it, yeah.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And you're gonna have to staff it.
And the one difference in this budget, for the past several years, you've actually used fund balance to balance the budget. As this budget's proposed, it uses zero dollars of fund balance.
Say that one more time.
You've allocated it in the past, hoping you don't need it. Sometimes you didn't need all of it, sometimes you needed, you know, to spend a portion of it. Tom, what I had proposed, not using any fund balance to balance next year's budget. In the budget you're currently in, you budgeted about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance. Um, hopefully your expenditures will be less and you'll bring in additional funds and you won't have to use it, but you have had a history of actually using your fund balance initially to balance the budget.
So using your methodology, last year's budget was six hundred thousand in the hole?
Yeah. I mean, your revenues are gonna be greater, but you've had some, you know, several expenditures. Insurance, you know, um, our property is significantly higher than what was budgeted. Budgeted workers' comp was significantly higher than what was budgeted. Um, attorney's fees was significantly higher than what was budgeted. So I'm hoping you're gonna balance it out where you don't need the six hundred and forty thousand dollars. But when you adopted that budget, it was under the assumption that you might have to use it.
So are we eating to it?
I guess I'm asking is if you don't want, or if you're not interested in a COLA, Tom, and a merit, and the salary adjustments. I don't need to put it in the budget if it's not going anywhere. I mean, I, I mean, you can take it out later, but make my job easier if you decide now, if you have any interest in all of those options.
You said the COLA and the merit is about six hundred?
Yeah, each one's about three hundred.
And they're three, and they're both, they're both about three hundred each, okay. So one of the possibilities is to eliminate the merit for this year and/or strategically place the merit. So not, maybe not everybody gets the merit, but just those that are a little behind in their pay compared to their competitors. That could save a few bucks. Exactly, that's a good way of putting it too, is you're just deferring it till next year or the year after, but more importantly, you're deferring it at least a year. Are we at a point where we wanna start talking about other cuts that the board is considering? Or are we looking to move forward with one of these numbers on top of this page?
I am with Jason on-
I think some of those cuts I may make before it actually gets to you, so.
Yeah.
Tom, I would suggest when you get your budget June the first, um, the board then should start looking at the things in there that you don't like, or things you wanna cut, or things you wanna add back to it.
Okay.
So you, you would- So June first is when you would have the finalization of the budget for us to actually go through.
Yep.
So even if we took this and went through it and still had questions with regard to what you've presented to us tonight and come back even at the next meeting, that would still give you an opportunity to still get things together and not just make a final decision as to a rate or anything specific tonight, but to really look at and think about the COLA or the, well, I'm not thinking about that. So to think about other items or things that might, you know, you wanna take out the budget or change, we would have the opportunity to do so.
Yes.
Okay.
And you've got the entire month of June to make whatever changes you wanna make to it. And minus any input from the board, I'm gonna probably give you a budget at the thirty cent tax rate. I mean, you can change that if you want to, you can add to it, you can subtract from it. I mean, that's really up to you, Howard. I gotta have a, a starting point somewhere.
I'm not interested in cutting out the COLA or the merit raises. I agree with Commissioner Hall on this. I do not wanna cut the comms director position. I mean, we have, what's our population now, twenty-five thousand? We need staff to do the work for this town. I mean, that, that is insane to even consider cutting that. Thank you for providing the list of our inventory. I think there are three items here that we could sell, that we could apply to any of our capital improvement projects. So that would be my opinion.
Are there any capital improvement items that you guys would like to consider? I mean, for me, I think the crack sealing machine should be a no-brainer. Does anyone object to funding that? I think if we could just address a few items, it would help our manager here. Well, I, I think he needs direction on an idea of which rate we're leaning towards, because that's gonna help him understand where the necessary cuts or what funds we're gonna have available to fund these things. I kinda just prefer to approach it the other way, rather than starting with a rate and seeing what fits into it. I prefer to look at the items and then see what rate that calculates out to. And I think he wants some direction from us on, on these items that are on screen. Well, I mean, you mentioned the current budget eliminated all these items, I thought. So there's four point six million dollars we're looking at. Three of them are funded, that's fair enough, so maybe it's closer to three.
Yeah, you probably got, um, three million dollars' worth of capital.
Okay, and, and the first line item at the thirty percent rate, we're, um, we're in the hole nine hundred thousand. I mean, I, I think I'm pretty good at math, but I don't know.
At thirty cent rate, you're in, Tom, you're to the good, five hundred and sixty-one thousand.
So-
I'm on your updated sheet I gave you on your desk tonight.
I mean, we can't even fund everything on that list at the highest rate.
No, you're not gonna fund it.
Right. Not in a year. Right, so we have to make some choices, right? So what do we- That's my point, yeah, that's, that's exactly my point. Well, why don't we, you know, go through the list and give them some direction? And if you got, you know, if anyone's undecided, we can talk about it later on, but let's at least address some items here. So I, I thought this budget you were presenting at the thirty cents, that's nine hundred in the hole, had all these items in red are not funded, except these three DOT items, correct?
Everything I told you on the list, that, that the COLA, the merit, the law enforcement salaries adjusted, general fund salaries adjusted to be competitive, the four additional police officers and the four cars is in all three of these scenarios. The only difference is you've got, at thirty cents, you've got about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars you could use towards capital. At the mid-rate, you got about one point six million dollars you could use for capital. And at thirty-four cents, you got about two point two million dollars you could use towards capital. And I don't have to have it tonight, but, um, I've only been here six months. I really don't know what you see as the most important items on that list. I mean, you got a long list and it's gonna take some time to get to those, Tom, items, but I really would like to know, Tom, which ones are the most important to the board as a whole?
Yeah, I, I think you have given us a lot of information. I, I, I think it would be fair for us to maybe just analyze this and, and absolutely give you that feedback-
Yeah.
-based on this. I'll throw something out again, I know it's not popular, but we could sell the thirty-four, of which we have a buyer and that, we can pay for everything. And keep the fund balance alone and keep our eyes on that balloon payment we've got in four and a half years of almost five million dollars.
And what's the balloon payment on?
Uh, the, uh, Helms Extension.
Helms, yeah.
The Parkway West.
I'm not sure what that-
That was the grant match for five million dollars.
Yeah.
I call it a balloon payment.
Yeah.
Because it's a big one.
Hey, you gotta buy two and a half million dollars you're gonna come up with in the next three years.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, so now you're starting to see where my head's at, cause I'm thinking down, down the path. I, I know it's not popular, but it's, it should be an option. And then all of these problems go away. I just don't think we should be funding year-to-year budgets by selling off land. I mean-
We're funding projects, it's the same thing.
Well, it isn't a regular practice, you're right about that. It's, i- it isn't a regular practice, but in, in this particular case, it's a non-performing asset. We have a buyer, um, and I would prefer having a very happy police department and other departments in the town and have all these projects going and the community overall being, being happy with it. All I'm saying is it's an option. Right, and, you know, the other option is to look at some of, some other areas of savings, you know? I'm not sure what of the cuts were made, but, um, I do think that our events budget is very high. Some of the travel budgets are very high. So, you know, and we have the, um, the rec barn. You know, if a private business was operating that, they would have to pay either property taxes or a mortgage. You know, I think it would be a nice goal for our town to be able to operate that in a sort of sustainable way, you know, self-sustaining way. You know, as a town, we don't have to pay taxes to ourselves, right? So, um, we should be able to operate something like that without it being a burden. As for the capital improvement list, um, you know, the transportation projects really loom for me. Obviously, we have to do the DOT ones. I would also like the Pine Oak signal. And I think actually the skate park's really important. There are a lot of kids who use that. It's not a, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge amount for us to start down that road of doing the design. Does anyone else have any capital improvements they wanted to speak on? I mean, you, you touched on a topic too that I'm wondering if we've looked at yet, is all the fees for services. And what would it look like if, if we started raising some of the fees for services, especially the, the parking rec, like you mentioned, the rec barn fees? It, it would be great if the rec barn could pay for itself, and I, I understand it. It may not necessarily be fully utilized today, but if we can get that to a point to where it's paying for itself, does upping the rate of things help in any way? And then in terms of the events, same thing there, is there a way of upping some of the fees for some of the things we do for our events? Having a booth, having a food truck, all that stuff. I think this is another area of maybe upping the revenue. I don't see us getting maybe nine hundred thousand, but if we can get closer, it, it looks like we're, it looks like we're closer at the thirty cents than we were maybe a few weeks ago. So I, I would encourage us to continue to pursue that and see what we can get out of it. So we can either, I mean, you guys are mentioning selling this land, so then that's sort of, you could break that into two options, right? You're selling the land and not necessarily making a lot of choices on this list, or not selling the land and making some choices? I'd be fine with that. Fine with? Selling land and making choices. Okay, yeah, well, third option then, yeah. Yeah, it's the middle ground. I think if, if we do that, then we need to make sure we're finding the right buyer for that land and we sell it in the right way. I mean, personally, I'm not in favor of selling that land. I prefer for us to take a more detailed look at this budget and, uh, make more cuts. I agree. I think we're close at the thirty cents, I think we're close.
I mean, if you do decide to sell land, that doesn't necessarily, you know, to have an immediate impact on it, but it may take you six months or nine months to settle land, so you could always come and say, okay, this is, is what we're gonna use the proceeds for, so.
That's not an automatic thing for sure.
No.
When you presented the, uh, point two six two as the revenue neutral rate, and you were talking, um, about the budget at the last meeting, I thought I heard you say that it would be, we would be better off if we took a middle ground, which was closer to the point three two percent. So now how are we down to the point three zero percent from the middle ground of the point three two percent?
I think Rosie, uh, mentioned the middle rate. I think my statement was that I felt like you, you probably could not go below the thirty cents.
Below the thirty, but that the point three-
But I think Rosie suggested you go with the mid-rate. Tom, which does give you more options for, you know, for the future capital improvements, but-
And it's still lower than the rate that we have right now?
Yes.
If we went at the point three two?
Yeah, cause you're currently at point-
Three eight.
Yeah, three eight five.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So.
You mentioned earlier about an increase for the PD specifically, right? So that's separate from the COLA and the merit?
Well, actually, there's, Tom, if you give them, say, for a basic officer, if his salary goes up ten thousand dollars, Tom, your basic starting salary for, for an officer goes up ten thousand dollars, everybody currently working there, salary goes up an additional ten thousand dollars, which includes the same three percent, COLA and the three percent. Merit is just a different way of giving it to them. You're just giving them, you know, a straight bump of- You're just giving them, you know, a straight bump of $10,000 per person. Because you're raising your base salary by that amount. So everybody's got to go up and stay in the same range they work-
So you're saying COLA and merit for everybody but PD up to $10,000? Raised to $10,000?
I think $10,000 for one level. Chief and her son would go up to $11,000, and then maybe the PD would go up 11,000. Tom, so your donors, you know, somewhat different, but that's where you've got most of your competition. I mean, that's where you face the biggest risk of losing staff, because you're so far behind everybody else.
And they're still behind with that raise?
You'd be pretty close. If your starting salary is $59,000, you're pretty competitive, aren't you, chief?
I appreciate that.
I mean, it's, you know-
I mean, yeah, PD is the most, one of the most behind, so I think we do need to, you know, raise them in relation to the others.
So if my math is correct, and you're certainly welcome to correct me, but the 30 percent, or the .30 rate, is a 14.5 percent increase? The .3235 is a 23.5 percent increase? And then, of course, the 34 is a 30 percent increase? So when the question comes up, why are we, why do we want to continue to push for 30 when 32.5, 32.35 is kind of the middle ground? The concern is the middle ground is still a 23.5 percent increase. And that's a sizable increase. It was a sizable increase four years ago at 20 percent, and 23.5 is yet another sizable increase. And it just begs the question, do we continue to raise our taxes 20 percent every four years? And that's kind of, that's where the push is. That's, that's my concern.
Technically lowers it from what the tax rate was before, but you're right in that ratepayer does see an increase as a result of the revaluation.
Correct, and my numbers that I just presented are the increase that that ratepayer will be paying.
Then that's based on the reevaluation, not based upon our increase in the tax rate? Because our tax rate did not create the increase with the, with what the county did in their reevaluation. So that's where the increase is really coming from. So we're just trying to offset what the county did. And even if you go to the .32, it's lower than the .38. But the .30, if you're looking at that rate, then yes, you're looking at a significant amount of cuts and things to staffing expenditures and everything else, you know, for the town. So I'm just asking, is the middle ground of .32 something that we can do, still lowering Waxahaw's tax rate? You know, even though the county has increased their tax rate in their reevaluation for homes?
Yeah, I mean, we knew a rate change was coming. We knew a revow was coming, and we also have fairly good reason to believe there's going to be another revow in four years. So these things are not a surprise. We know these things change, and it's just a matter of living within our means. The .3 cents is a 14.5 percent increase to what the ratepayer will be paying. And I think it's incumbent for us to live within our means and to live within the confines of that type of increase. But it's still an increase, and we can sit here and blame the county and all of that. But it's, the reality is, is we knew this was coming, and we need to be responsible about it. And that's why I'll continue to push for the 30 cents.
Well, if anything, the county is doing the right thing by doing it every four years instead of the required every eight years, because-
Every seven or eight, exactly.
Yeah.
I do agree with the increase in every four, however, I have been a proponent of every two, because it is a growing part of the, part of the state. If we are considering the, let me throw something, another idea out there, is that if we did suggest the midpoint for this year, and agreed to sell the 34, and agreed to make some cuts, then it's absolutely possible we could cut it in the future and provide a discount to the citizens.
That's possible, but it comes at a big hit for a lot of folks this year.
Selling that land, though, if it gets more houses on it, that's going to create a burden in the future, because those houses are not going to pay for themselves in terms of the services we have to provide.
When do we get our cost of services study back?
He said by the end of this month was the last conversation I had with him. So hopefully at the next board meeting, he'll be able to make a presentation. At least on a draft. I mean, I'll push him towards that date.
I mean, I don't think the cost of service study is going to be a huge revelation. You know, it's, it's good to have. It's going to be very good for us to have. But, you know, if you guys had a chance to look at your economic development handbook that we got from UNC, there was a very interesting part at the beginning here, which I'll read out. "Economic development can help expand and balance a tax base so that a jurisdiction will have the resources it needs to provide high-quality public services at a reasonable cost to its residents. Balancing the tax base among the various land uses, agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial is especially important for the many bedroom communities that exist in North Carolina. These communities rely on local tax bases comprised mostly of residential property. However, residential development does not typically generate sufficient tax revenues to pay for the public services it requires. By contrast, commercial and industrial development projects not only pay for themselves, but provide net tax revenues in excess of the costs for needed public services." So the cost of service study is not going to say residential development is worth it.
I think one of the interesting points I sent to you last week, we've got $90 million worth of commercial property under construction. I'm sorry, $30 million, I think. And when you use our tax rate, that only generates about $90,000. And that's one of the issues you face, is when your tax rate is as low as it is, you know, it takes a lot of property to generate a lot of income. I might have thought you'd seen much more than that, but it's not really-
Yeah, that was a surprise.
A huge number for next year.
That was definitely a surprise. Is there any more information you need tonight, then?
No, I don't think so. If you want us to bring you back at the next meeting in May, and we'll give you more updated list of the capital projects that are not funded. We'll update that list for you.
That sounds good. Thank you very much, Mr. Hicks. Alrighty, next up, we have Ms. Dina Sabinski.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here back to bring back the, oh, this is new, the Learning Center for your consideration for this upcoming project. As we talked about it at several meetings before, about the, at our last budget meeting, we went over the pros and cons. We also went over the timeline, and we went over the actual bid. With the construction, we already have $500,000 in our capital improvement fund for this project. We have already, we thought outside the box to fill in some of those soft costs with our ARP funding, which we got a lot of that soft cost included in that. Went over the actual plans for the Learning Center itself. Everything that we've been talking about for the last two years. Finally got it to permissioned, where we went out to bid. We had our lowest responsible bidder in Gaius at $958 and some change. Then also have a little contingency for third-party testing with any building. You just need to have that available. Then we had some outstanding costs at the budget retreat, retralt about what that looked like. Also, IT had a comment in that they had some savings on that as well. So that number will go down as well. Then we thought outside the box of what you could cut. The project itself has a lot of infrastructure ADA that just cannot be cut out of the project. This has been deferred maintenance for over 25 years. It is what it is on that. So we could cut some things off, but the infrastructure is the main point of, the main budget issue. There will be staffing requests in the future. In our budget, we talked about two part-time staff. And, but in future, depending on what the needs are and the cost recovery to help that need, that extra staff would be needed. Then I went through what the actual award, and for Mr. Hicks to be able to execute that contract. And I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? I know we've gone through this a lot, and we've combed through the budget in a lot of detail over the last month, so I'm not sure what else there is to cover here. It's fairly clear, and just to reiterate what Mr. Hicks said, that this, these funds are coming out of this year's fund balance, and it's not necessarily a part of the '25, '26 budget. So I guess it's just, we need a final decision on this. Any comments or questions?
Well, didn't we punt this until the 27th?
I thought we punted it till today. I don't know.
Okay, alright, so it's, so it's today. But you keep saying this has no impact on future budgets, but we have to staff it, don't we?
That's one of my big concerns as well. I agree with you.
And we're sitting here, I mean, literally, we're sitting here talking about the budget about $1,000 line items. I can't believe we're talking about this right now. I can't in good conscience vote for something like this when the town staff is wondering if they're going to get merit increases or COLA increases.
Yeah, this, this project is getting to a point to where we have a bid that's literally about to expire.
Okay.
So it's one of those things where a decision is needed sooner than later. And if it gets to that point, then we kind of lose the current bid, and then it goes back out to rebid, which is a concern, because it might just go up. But again, to your concerns, Mr. Hall, Commissioner Hall, regarding staffing, I think those are also very valid concerns. The additional headcount needed to cover this is, is going to be a new burden in the coming fiscal years as well. So I think this is a, it's a big decision, but I think it's a decision we've got to make sooner than later.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Please.
Commissioner Hall did bring up a point. He did make a motion at the last meeting to defer this item until the 27th. The contractor cannot hold that money for that long. So staff sent an email to Commissioner Hall to ask him for consideration of rescinding that motion that he made at the last meeting. So if the board wants to act on this, then Commissioner Hall will need to agree to rescind his motion, and you can act on this item tonight and render a decision. Otherwise, until that motion is rescinded, that decision can't be made tonight.
Understood.
So I don't want to be that guy, but I will rescind the motion and let y'all choose, but you know where my head's at. So I'll make a motion to rescind my motion from the last meeting to decide this on May 27th.
That was on April 22nd.
Now you've confused me. Right, the last meeting, yeah, correct.
Yes, yes, that was the last meeting when you made the motion.
Yeah, that's right.
And that effectively leaves it on tonight's agenda, then? Pushing for a decision to be made tonight?
You'll need to act on that motion. He's made a motion to rescind, so then you will act on that as to, if everyone is in favor of that. So you'll need to vote on that, and then you can vote on, go and proceed with the voting on the current item.
Tonight. Alright, there was a motion on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries, so we will rescind that and make a decision on this tonight, it sounds like. So again, without further ado, is there any more discussion or comments we need to have?
I just want to remind everybody that this is a project we have worked on for two years. We have spent a lot of money on this project to get where we're at. This is a need in our community. It's for lower income, for our children, for helping people better themselves by having access to computers, to take online classes. Yet we sit there and we spend all this money, or we talk about not selling land in an area of town that has a lot, and yet we're not willing to put money into an area that's needed, that has had access to these computers and all these resources that they have there. I just think that it is a grave injustice to this town if we take this away right now.
I just had a question, Dina.
Yes, ma'am.
In the future, as far as staffing, we talked about, it's not, probably not coming online for over a year, correct?
So we won't, staffing probably won't come online until next budget.
And we talked about part-timers to start, right?
And we actually presented with y'all two part-timers, a programmer and like a front desk person. And they would basically staff the hours. And we gave you options about what that looks like, having those two part-timers. It wouldn't be open every day, and it would have limited times, just because you're, you're only dealing with 40 hours.
Right, and then, so my other question was, could you, I know you have a lot of, you have staff that is housing different buildings. Is there any way we can put a staff member there that might be an events coordinator, but might be able to man that as well to start, to see the need? Because we don't even know what the need's going to be, just to get us over that hump.
We can adjust minimally, because, for example, the rec barn. We have a full-time staff person that stays there. But when we have multiple rentals or classes going on, we pull other staff members to go over there. And that's ongoing all the time. When she's out, you know, secret vacation, again, others, we, we already do that. But we need to have like a head person, like somebody that knows that, and then we do pull in. And that's, I mean, we're down to park staff right now, and you're, you saw me pulling trash bags over the weekend.
I did, you were.
We all do what we gotta do. We do what we gotta do. But that's, that's just the park and rec way. But to open a facility, you're going to have to have dedicated staff. And we listened to what y'all asked for, and we, we got it down to those two part-timers. But again, there's not necessarily consequences, but there is, there's, there's only so much time in a day that you have a person there. This is a facility that has equipment in it. And this is one of those facilities that could be a cost recovery. Because right now, again, the meeting place is our highest, one of our highest used, other than the rec barn and the downtown parks seasonally, for rentals. Because there's nowhere else around here to, to do that. Your civic groups, your church groups, they have nowhere else to go. There is no other space. I mean, it just goes back to that also, that health and wellness. But y'all know all that, because we talked about it for a minute now. But y'all understand the need. I just need direction on when we, when we start.
Where to go? Any other comments or questions from the board? Very well, then, I'd like to get a motion to award a contract for the Waxahaw Learning Center to Gaius Construction in the amount of $958,900. And authorize the interim town manager to execute said contract.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, that one opposed? You get that? You get that? Thank you. This motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you, and I will be back with updates about the timeline.
All righty.
Thank you.
All righty, next up, we have, let's see, that's been done. Ms. Janet Pirano, Waxaw American 250 Committee.
That's right. So I'm Janet Pirano, your Historic Preservation Planner, and I'm here tonight to talk about America 250 Committee. So we've talked a little bit about this at previous meetings. America is semi-quintcentennial. It's America's commemoration of 250 years since the signing of the Declaration of the Independ, of Independence. In 2016, America 250 was established with the mission to celebrate and commemorate this important milestone. Commissions have been established in all 50 states and U.S. territories. America 250 North Carolina was founded in 2024 with the goal of establishing county committees statewide. As of today, there are 74 county committees across North Carolina. In the absence of a union county committee, staff is seeking to establish a Waxaw America 250 Committee. The purpose of the committee is to plan and organize events, projects, and initiatives at the local level to commemorate the 250th anniversary, to foster participation of a wide variety of local organizations and groups to participate in creating America 250 events and resources, and to contain membership spanning diverse perspectives and skills and include members from a variety of sectors. So on the screen is the list of organizations that have agreed to participate. And the committee will also have the support of the Waxaw Historic Preservation Commission, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the America 250 North Carolina Commission. So on the screen is the resolution to establish the Town of Waxaw America 250 Committee. It's also in your packet, so I'm not going to read the whole thing. But tonight, the requested action is a motion to adopt that resolution to establish the Waxaw 250 Committee. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? All righty then, could I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-013, establishing the Waxaw America 250 Committee?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-013, establishing the Waxaw America 250 Committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we need a reading of that?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you very much. We'll get this thing kicked off and hopefully have a really big party next year. All righty, next up, a discussion regarding the Waxaw Sign Lease. Mr. Hicks?
I'll handle it. Back in 2016, the town signed a lease for the installation of a Welcome to Waxaw sign on Highway 75 as you enter town. That lease was with Mr. Michael Mees. There was no charge for the lease. And unrelated matter, the zoning officer found some non-conforming signs on that property where they were actually advertising something that was not, that was on a different parcel of land. So at the time, he was instructed to take those signs down. Apparently, he was getting some income from those signs. So, Tom, once those signs were taken down, he responded back to us and said that if, unless we allowed him to put those signs back, which would be in violation of the zoning ordinance, then to his ass that we either remove our sign or begin paying a lease of $3,000 per year. So staff needs some guidance. Do you want to remove the sign or would you entertain a lease with the property owner? I think staff's thought is we would just move it and find a different location for it, but we do need guidance from the board.
And this is a move that we can certainly handle with public services, I'm sure?
That was my question. I'm assuming there's easement or something somewhere we can put a sign? Where would we move it to?
I suggested CSX, but... That got shot down.
Tom, we don't have any where specifically yet. I think some of the staff mentioned maybe we have some right away on a different subdivision we could look at. Of course, we'd have to work with DOT, maybe we could find something in there right away. But, you know, we'd have to explore different options. But, Tom, as I understand it, it's a fairly movable sign. I thought it was brick and it had a foundation, but it's just a facade, Tom, so it could easily be moved. And, Tom, and if we do find somewhere else, we'll get back with the board and let you know.
Okay. I'm hearing move it, so I'll just jump to this motion. Can I get a motion to remove the sign and find another location?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. This motion carries. We will go ahead and find another location for our sign. All righty, Ms. Dina Zabinski, Friends of Waxaw Parks and Recs.
All righty, thanks for having me up again. So I'm going to do a little recap of the Friends of Waxaw Parks and Rec nonprofit. We've basically been talking about this for a couple of years as well, through, at our retreat time, and then some two-by-twos as well. So I'm going to just jump on in. The purpose of this nonprofit is to basically be a great support role on volunteers and funding, to help us budgetize some of the ask from citizens or something that, for extras, we need for the parks facilities. Also, it gives us a different way of bringing in funding that we don't have access right now, such as sponsorships, our large donations, and different types of grants. Timeline-wise, we've been talking about it again for a few years. We've made presentations the last couple retreats. We're down to the wire now of actually selecting the board and then also asking for y'all to pick what lucky winners are going to be on this nonprofit. So that is what's going on tonight. Then our next steps would be our MOU and then our, our tax paperwork. All the benefits that help us as this friends group is basically extra funding, we're going to be liaisons for, the staff will be a liaison for it, getting grants, tax for large donations, that's a big thing for the, for citizens to get that tax deduction, opportunities for more public-private partnerships, and then of course, helping out with our town budget. How it's set up, we did originally have it as the Assistant Town Manager as the liaison. We'll have to work through that to be now the town manager for that leadership role, so we'll update that. But we'll have two commissioners, myself and Robin as a admin manager to help out with the finances part of it, then two members from PCR and four members of the public. The applications for the public, the community side, went out in January, we got them back, we went through all the interview process, all the vetting process, and then came up with a wonderful list. So today you are going, I missed one, nope. Today, we're going to talk about the, the actual board and do that selection with the list that we have provided for you, and then also, there's your two members. And here are your selection of wonderful, amazing volunteers that would like to be on this board. You'll see some recognized names. So again, truly different types of backgrounds, passions, mission on just making Waxaw Park, you know, it a better place for us to work, play. And so we're super excited that they're willing to invest their time and effort and fundraising effort for this mission. And we're super excited to present this list to you tonight. So this is your list, and you also should have that in your packet as a separate thing too, so you have those. And then their appointed times that they're on for, to start us off. So your motion tonight is to, to agree to that list and be good with our volunteers and then who is going to come join the fun from the commissioners?
Any questions from the board? Comments?
So do we do the first motion and then do nominations for, before we do the second motion? Is that how we're going to do it?
Two separate motions.
Two separate motions, yes.
Two separate motions, yeah. Very well, if there's no questions, I would ask for a motion to appoint the slate of nominees as presented to the Friends of Waxaw Parks and Rec Trail.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And that motion carries. So with this motion, I have a motion to nominate two commissioners, so could I get nominations?
Are there any commissioners who would like to volunteer?
Well, I would nominate Commissioner Wedger.
Any commissioners that would like to volunteer?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear.
I would do it, would you do it?
Okay.
Me? Like a Carpo.
All right, so.
A Carpo in the 77 thing.
All right, motion to nominate Commissioner Wedger and Commissioner, did you say you would do it?
Weslick.
Motion to nominate Commissioner Wedger and Commissioner Weslick to serve on the Friends of Waxaw Parks and Trails.
All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Weslick and Commissioner...
Yay!
I did.
This is awesome!
Friends of the Parks.
Yay! All right, good job, guys.
Long walks lay ahead of you.
It's all good. And I'll, I'll be in touch with both of y'all on the upcoming meetings and agenda. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, the next item on the agenda is a roundtable discussion regarding a draft resolution to oppose North Carolina Senate Bill 688 and House Bill 765. It was an idea by staff to maybe discuss this with the board before simply presenting it, so as to maybe skip the effort of something that may just get denied. So I'm just kind of curious, I wanted to take the temperature of the board and see where the rest of the board was at in regards to opposition to Senate Bill 688 and House Bill 765. Both of these bills seek to curtail significantly the power and authority of local governance in maintaining control of development, the rate of development, the density of development, and so forth. So it was the goal to establish a resolution which would join with many other municipalities around the state at a local as well as county level. We've had county commissions, as Commissioner Helms just alluded to earlier this evening, as well as counties around the state that have put forward resolutions in opposition to these bills to try and maintain and fight for maintaining local control of zoning and development and so forth. So this is an open discussion. I just wanted to see how people, what people think about this and if it's worthwhile to put forward any such motion. Any thoughts?
I would be for a resolution to oppose it. Takes away all of our local control. It gives us absolutely no ability to do any zoning. It takes away the ability of our planning department to do their jobs. It takes away public hearings, away from citizens to be able to come out and oppose developments. There are a lot of sections in here that, I mean, it's, it's just egregious. It restricts, 160D-402 Part D restricts what local governments can spend development fee revenues on. 160D-707 new sections give local governments only 90 days to complete a zoning decision. If it's not done within that time, it will be considered automatically approved. 160D-403B, it allows for local government staff only 14 days to review a development application for completeness. If not done within that time, it will be considered an automatic approval. And that's just a few. The list goes on and on.
These bills are just the most blatantly corrupt thing I've ever seen, just about. I mean, the primary sponsors work in the industry, they received campaign donations from the industry, and now they're trying to pay back the industry by paving the way to more profits. I mean, South Carolina has impact fees, North Carolina doesn't, and yet they're so greedy, they're not satisfied with that. They want to decimate local government. So I would certainly support a motion to direct staff to create a resolution against this.
Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts or concerns?
Did we vote on this before?
We voted on a resolution to oppose Senate Bill, what was it, 382?
382.
And that was the bill that took away the right to, you couldn't downzone without property owners' approval, but that also impacted other elements of zoning. And I believe Ashley has some details on that.
Yeah, so that's actually a separate bill. I'm actually here to help Barbie gather information. I know with resolutions, I help write a lot of them, so we were just looking for clarification of anything that you would like us to either include or avoid in the resolution so that we can make everyone happy.
Exactly. So that basically was a bill that was written last year and approved last year. So that's kind of a over and done sort of thing.
Yeah, 382 is in effect and is good to go.
Exactly.
We had to alter our land development code for it.
To account for those diminished authority. So this is just sort of trying to nip it in the bud before it gets any further than it already is.
And so this bill makes that bill look like a playground?
Perhaps.
This is like that bill on steroids?
Legislative changes are just a cycle, and we're just in the middle of that cycle right now. I don't want to steer, steal Commissioner Helms' thunder, but I went and found four big things that will impact Waxaw. We're no longer included in the density requirement. We were at first, so we're grateful for that. All subdivisions will be administrative, so you guys won't see them. They'll come straight through our planning department only.
Of any size?
Subdivisions in general.
Any size subdivision?
Yes, any subdivision.
If there was, say, 1,300 acres on the southeastern side of town that...
It could be an island.
Wanted to build 5,000 homes.
We shall subdivide it. Any chances for the historic district and how this will impact our historic district? I know it's something that you guys have been thinking about, but just thinking long-term with that and what that would look like. And the biggest one for me is sidewalks of all things. We talk about pedestrian safety a lot, and this bill would not allow me to enforce builders developing these soft walks for their developments unless it connected to an existing sidewalk. So for example, at, say, 34-acre cells and becomes a housing development, if there's no sidewalk around it, they wouldn't have to put sidewalks in to connect to. And to me, that breaks my heart because I'm all about pedestrian safety, but that was the big one for me. I like my sidewalks. But was there anything that Barbie and I could get together and brainstorm about that you guys would like in the resolution or would not like in the resolution that y'all can be agreeable to do this evening?
There's a couple of resolutions that have already been passed, like I've said, by a variety of municipalities and authorities, and I think those also serve as good models. And some of them are more vague than others.
Right.
In terms of not necessarily hinged upon 688 and 765.
Correct.
So I think going in that direction.
We can be, we can be vague, we just want to be supportive.
I just also wanted just to talk about, because you mentioned it excluded us from the density requirement, but that was based on the 2020 census.
Correct.
And so, yeah, that can change on a dime.
Right, but as, as it is right now, it would stay on the 2020 census. However, you figure in five years, you never... However, you figure in five years, you never know.
What's that population that's keeping us out of that? Is it like 30,000?
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
Yeah. So it's not like we'd have to be 60 or 100,000, we could be 30 or...
Depends how many folks you guys have moved into Waxaw. I mean, you guys have about 5,000 homes in the pipeline, so...
Yeah, on paper, we could very easily be 35,000 people.
So you're 25 now, and then would assume then.
Yeah.
And the county wants our help on this because they are also very, very close to that density requirement. And the numbers for the county were actually worse than they were for towns. So your rural donut holes that you guys have very well could have up to seven homes.
Per acre.
Per acre.
Yeah.
Ruining our farmland, all of it.
Basically...
Well, that's why I tried to get rid of all the donut holes, but I was unsuccessful.
I mean, it puts a huge burden on the taxpayer to pay for infrastructure. It mandates counties like Union County, who provide sewer and water, it mandates them to build more facilities, to facilitate the extra residential development. That will cost the taxpayer. It's just an attack on local government. I believe that the earlier language about fixed opinions not subject to change was removed. I guess they didn't want to step on the First Amendment with that one, but shows their mentality, though. There's a, there's so many things I would want put in the resolution, but I don't even know if a resolution's gonna, I mean, if this motion is gonna pass, so. It's an attack on local government. It would open us up personally to liability. It says that if you are, you know, the existing language says that you shouldn't participate or vote on land use issues if there's a financial connection. They remove that so that there's, if there's any connection, which is kind of ridiculous to me. I mean, there's always going to be some kind of connection because you live in the town that you're an elected official in, so...
And you're serving.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. So, I could go on and on.
I'm happy to work with Barbie to come up with something that you all are comfortable with. I just, we just wanted some clarification before we spent a couple hours on it.
I'm trying to understand the timeline of this, so it's gone back to the Finance Committee. And how long does it sit in that committee, do we know?
I do not know the crossover date.
I, it's not, it's not published. I sent you guys the latest and greatest from May 29th.
It was supposed to cross over last week, right? But now that it's in Finance, it's exempt from the crossover.
I don't know what that crossover date would be now.
It is exempt from the crossover because
I don't know.
Because now they made it a Finance bill. I was just doing some research today, so...
I know, they changed some numbers, which sent it back to Finance. I'm not familiar with what the crossover date would be on that.
So it's technically not dead.
It's probably never going to die, it'll just keep coming back.
It'll resuscitate, yeah, for sure.
But that's what I'm wondering, do we want to really put a lot of time into something that really may not make too much of a difference?
We could just do something small that shows our support with the county. I really want to build a relationship with the county as well, and make friends in 2020.
The goal here is, it's like a vote. I mean, we're adding our name to the pile, and that's the goal, is to add our name to the pile of municipalities and counties that...
But I also don't want to make anybody uncomfortable, I want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with what we write.
And that's what my, I guess I don't know as much about this one as I did the last one, because there were certainly things in the la, the 382
Yes, ma'am.
That I agreed with. And so, and I wouldn't feel comfortable passing a resolution that includes things unless I 100% agree with it.
Right.
There was some, what I would consider some inflammatory language by Commissioner Helms that I would prefer we not
Steer clear of?
Yes.
Understood.
I, the American Dream Act is actually a very valid act, I believe. It's providing affordable housing, and I want to steer clear of what would be considered exclusionary zoning. I also don't like the idea of assuming that just because someone has an occupation that they are biased towards a decision. I mean, I understand that it may look that way, but not everybody that supported this bill comes from a developer background. So there are other reasons one may support a bill. So I, I would like to stick more to factual information.
So you support this abomination?
I support what?
You support this Bill 765?
I didn't say that.
I think I understand where she's coming from. She wants to use certain facts and verbiage to ensure that we're neutral in our stance and aren't taking sides, per se.
Neutral? I mean...
There's probably, I understand, but we're opposing it in a non-confrontational way. Sorry, I'm an engineer by nature, I'm not great with words.
You know, it says it's for affordable housing. There's no evidence that a bill like this will make housing more affordable. There's no requirements on developers to make affordable housing. They're just going to build more luxury housing for the people who want to move to the state, and we're going to be stuck with the bill for it. And you don't see a problem with developers who are serving on the state level paving the way for developer profits?
I don't see any proof of that. There is commissioners serving on our county board who have been, had donations from developers. So what I would say is affordable housing does come from density, though, so there, that is a fact. And so that's why I, I would say that, yes, that that does create affordable housing.
The only concern, well, not the only concern, but as far as the affordable housing language, I just feel like there's no stipulation in here to say that this is the max price of a home, this is, these are the people, you need to be eligible for this type of housing, you know, to be able to get into this type of home. I know that this was something recently went on in Charlotte for affordable housing, there was just an article out about a month or two ago that a single mom with three kids, who is a teacher, did not fit the requirement for affordable housing, for the affordable housing in that area. So they're saying it's affordable housing, but what in this bill proves what the price point's going to be? Because I know that for a long time, these developers have come in and say, you know, it's affordable housing, it's for your college kids to be able to live close to home, and yet the house prices are $550 and $600,000 for townhomes. That's not really affordable. So who is the arbiter of what's affordable? That's the problem I have with that language.
I think what we have to realize is that this is a statewide bill, right? So it's not, this is, we're not just talking about Waxaw, Marvin, Weddington, we're talking about large cities where the jobs are and they have a shortage of housing for the workers of those jobs. And when the state is trying to create jobs for the, you know, for the state and economic development, they need to have housing in order for companies to come here to provide those jobs. And that, so we have to think of it as, they are voting on this for the entire state, not just for Union County.
Well, then they probably should have done localized. They should have worked it differently, because...
I agree with you, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, to do one sweeping bill for an entire state that they don't know what we need here, and so they're requiring six, seven houses per acre, but no impact fees, seems pretty skewed.
I 100% agree, we need impact fees, and I shared before online that South Carolina even charges 2% higher property taxes for investors, you know, where it's your second home. I mean, yes, the state needs to be working on those items, but...
In theory, if you were in a closed system and you built more houses, yes, supply would bring the price down, but we're not in a closed system. There are a lot of people who want to move to the state, and this bill does not place any requirements on developers to do anything except rake in the profits.
I guess the overarching question is, does the board feel a resolution is worth pursuing? Or do we feel that it probably wouldn't get approved?
Is it something based upon information that you have received this evening that you can put something together to present to the board?
I'd be happy, Barbie and I will work together to be able to do that, yeah.
Okay, so can...
Absolutely. We just didn't want to take the time to do that if it wasn't something that was of interest to the entire board.
Would you propose maybe just they spend a half an hour crafting an outline?
I think what would be...
That could then be refined.
I like the idea of us crafting our own, because Waxaw has always been kind of, to me, the, a leader in the county. And I don't think we should necessarily have to do what the county decides to say. So I think we should do what's best for Waxaw.
You very much have your own opinion, yeah, absolutely.
I'm going to make a motion to direct the town clerk to draft a resolution opposing NC Senate Bill 688 and NC House Bill 765, including the Board of Commissioners' suggestions for adoption at the BOC regular meeting on May 27, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can you make another, make the motion?
Word it, you word it. So that motion fails, you have to fail. I think we're going to do another motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't like the wording of the opposing.
Well, it's opposing the bills, and that's the idea.
It's just opposing the bill, not the wording of the resolution.
Well, since that motion failed, would you like to make another motion?
Craft another.
Okay.
What would you like to change in the wording?
I mean, would you, would you prefer language that said, something that was along the lines of, "We believe as a town of Waxaw that we need to maintain local control and authority over our own zoning and development." Because there is some of the bills that didn't specifically mention the two, the House and the Senate bill, but they did specifically state maintaining local control and authority over zoning.
May, may I interrupt?
Because that's, that's what the, the whole crux of the whole thing.
I think we have to oppose the bill and word it in a way that you're comfortable with. I think that's, but I think this motion is just to have you draft something. That's all, it's not the wording of the resolution.
Correct. Yeah, it's just to bring a draft before you all. I just wanted, before Barbie and I sat down and...
So then you don't have to make the motion to oppose, you just make the motion to have, direct the town clerk and the senior, are you a senior planner?
The interim planning administrator for a couple more weeks.
Oh, my gosh. To draft a bill to present to this board regarding NC Senate Bill 688 and NC House Bill 765.
So are you suggesting a motion to draft a resolution regarding Senate Bill and House Bill? Instead of specifically stating a resolution opposing, you want a resolution regarding?
Yes.
I understand what to do with that.
You know, you know, do it.
Yes, I understand what to do with that.
That's the motion.
Okay. So does someone want to make that motion, then?
I just did, you stood. I just did.
Very well. Can you restate the motion? There's some questions on that.
Cindy, you were saying what?
I was just confirming that you made the motion. I think that the mayor wants you to restate it because I guess there's just some questions about it.
Okay.
Motion directing the town clerk and the interim
Planning administrator.
Planning administrator to draft a resolution regarding NC Senate Bill 688 and NC House Bill 765 to present to the board.
Regarding the bill or opposing the bill? Regarding. What are we going to say, just some commentary?
The interim, the interim planning, yes, guru, understands.
Yes, ma'am.
You understand.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Barbie, do you understand as well? We're teammates. We're good.
She's good.
Yep. We will have a draft for you the next time I see you.
Well, we need to vote on the motion.
Oh, yes, please vote.
Oh, we need to vote on the motion.
Yes, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, one opposed? Okay. Jason opposed. Thank you. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing that. All righty. Next up, we will walk through our leadership reports. First up, interim town manager, Richard Hicks.
Mayor, all I have, there is a list on the table.
Yes.
I had a request to prepare a report on any potential properties that the town owns that could possibly be sold or does not have a specified use, so I've got a list here for you with the current assessed tax value and the size of the property. And there's also a copy of the tax map attached to it, so that's, you know, just for the board's information.
Thank you very much, that's very helpful. Is that it? All righty. Business Development, Ashley.
So our downtown master plan survey is live right now. Our customer service team here at Town Hall has paper copies that you can take them here on site. They also have a QR code where you could take it online. You can also find the survey on our website, it's downtownwaxaw.com/masterplan, and the survey is right on there for anyone to take. And this is in partnership with our engineering team and their Safe Streets and Roads for All grant, too. So there's lots of questions, about 20 questions, that deal with downtown and transportation. This week, our design action team is replanting our planters in the downtown area, so tomorrow morning we will be freshening those up, which will be exciting. We have several businesses that are opening in Prescott over the next month, so please stay tuned to your inboxes and calendars for some ribbon-cutting invites for those. On May 21st at 3:00 PM, we are hosting a historic preservation workshop with the HPC crew. We'll be at Middle James Brewing, and it'll really just be an update on all the historic preservation projects that we have going on right now. Lastly, next week on May 23rd, on Friday, we have our annual site visit with the State Main Street group. We have one of our staff coming out to kind of do our annual assessment, so we'll have more to report on that at our next meeting, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Next up, Ms. Dina Sabinski.
Good evening again. At your spot, you'll have an updated list of all the cool things happening in Waxaw that is coming up at the end of the month and then going into June for our music, and then Juneteenth, and then our Independence Parade. So the applications are up and online, so please encourage your neighbor to have an entry into the parade, we'd love to have them. Also, I want to give you a heads up about this past weekend, Caladoscope was a wonderful success. Thank you for all the citizens that came out and joined us that day. We had over 5,000 in the park throughout the day, which was awesome. And then also with our shuttles, I know that was a discussion at budget, we had over 675 people that utilized the shuttles that came from Lawson and Millbridge down 16 in Waxaw Marvin. We also looked at the data with, the downtown area was up 30% from an average Saturday, so it's 12,000 people throughout the day on Saturday that were in our downtown. So another awesome reason why, I know events is a higher budget, but it also is an economic driver, so this is a great way to bring people to come visit, spend money, and then they go home. So just to give you a heads up on that, the next program guide is coming out soon, so be aware of that. That will, at the end of June, the next one will hit, but we're going to try to get it to you early, so you can sign up for classes starting in July. Any questions about events, programs, or parks?
I just wanted to thank Parks and Rec staff and all staff and police that were there on Saturday. It's a big event, and it went off without a hitch, so thank you very much, it was lots of fun.
Yes. No, no paperwork on... Yes. No, no, no paperwork on incident reports, so that was all good.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. And again, thanks to Parks and Rec and the whole staff for another great K-Fest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Going once, going twice. Alrighty. Next, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5 for an economic development discussion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session.
Convene this, can I get a motion to reconvene this board of commissioner meeting?
All in favor.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor. We're now adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.